will be archived and available on the district's websites.
First, I have Frank Aguilar.
Good evening. Thank you very much. Frank Aguilar, Cook County Commissioner of the 16th District. I've been in office since 2020 ahead of the pandemic. So I'm here, thanks for this district for inviting me, and I want also to extend a big thank you to Victoria Vance. She's a trustee in Westchester. This is regarding immigration, visiting ICE coming to Cook County. I started campaigning in my office. I have about 30, 40 organizations back in October, training them on how to deal with ICE, knowing your rights. The campaign is Knowing Your Rights. We developed a very strong coalition with many organizations and communities and public officials. We're concerned about many of our families. They did not come to school. Businesses are very concerned. So we've had a campaign kind of informing and teaching residents their rights from manufacturers, employees, restaurant owners, and we're very, very happy to bring one of our organizations here and kind of keep you up to date on what we're doing. This campaign has been very effective. I'm very proud to say when we started this back, my office started back in October, and then when the czar came to Cook County, they were averaging about 1,000 to 1,500 arrests throughout the country. But when they came to Chicago, the first few days, they barely made 50, less than 50 arrests. And we've given them, and he says that, you know, people are educated, informed, they know their rights. With them right, they know their rights. He made it up for them to teach them. We're not protecting criminals. It's very clear. ICE has the proper documentation, and they have the names of the persons they're looking for. And there's no need for them to come to our schools, to go to our employers, to go to daycare centers, to go to hospitals, to go to clinics, and terrorize our communities. They have what they need to look for who they're looking for. I reached out to this individual. I said, "Listen, if you want to control a line of boundaries, if you want them, you're looking for, they're yours, but leave our children and leave our community alone." So I'd like to share with you, I got some papers here, Knowing Your Rights, in English and Spanish. This man picked the wrong front with the wrong county, so we're going to protect it and protecting our immigration relation. The enormous contribution that our local community residents give to our economy is tremendous. I mean, just billions and billions of dollars that they generate in our local economy. So protecting our immigrants is protecting our local economies. And these families are here to contribute and raise our families and, you know.
But I want to leave when I get ready to leave. Nobody can force me out of my job. Because at the end of the day, I do my job. I do it effectively. I've done it. The rumors of PMSA failed lockdown, I got rumors of that, and I wasn't even here. I was actually at home dealing with another issue. But I'm hearing from another school, I actually heard from both schools about the rumor that PMSA failed lockdown, and that if I have been accused of leaking confidentiality, then somebody else should be accused of leaking confidentiality. Because I'm also hearing rumors, and I mean, the rumor mill is hard, when I'm hearing that he's trying to get rid of leads to lead. I can't. We've already dealt with the lead situations. We work well. We've had issues. We're trying to regain ourselves back from those issues. Security has always been a strong unit, but now, in the last maybe three or four years, we've divided in so many different ways, and it's not fair. When we did training, we did training with all three schools. Now we're doing three separate schools, and it shouldn't be. We should still be doing the same training because we're all doing the same job. We've got to get back on one accord in order to make things stronger for the school. And until we make things stronger, we're still going to be weak in different spots. The leads, we have, two of the leads are being talked about so bad. But I don't know if you all are hearing it, but I know I'm hearing it. I don't know if they're hearing it, but I know I am. Because people are upset because certain people are in positions that shouldn't be because they don't have the training, and if they don't have the training, they're a power. They're a power home. And it's crazy. And I feel if we don't get a hold in, I really, what I want to do, and I really wanted to talk to Ash often, my hope about is some of the older security talking and trying to train the newer security, because the fact is, we've been here long, we know what's going on, and we know how to handle stuff. But until, we just got to figure out something because we're having too many problems. Thank you.
Award ready.
Good evening, board and community. Yeah, I'm here to talk about audit. I am used to seeing a district audit. You might have had one, but maybe I missed it. But I am talking about tonight, audit and audit control. Now, was there an audit report for the district in 2023 by CPA certified public accounting? Were there? That's my question there. That's the question. If so, did the auditor explain in detail how the $4 million were taken from the district bank account? Now, that's a job for auditors to look at, trace it, find it, and explain to the community or whoever they're working for what happened. I've never seen that. Did the auditor explain that apparently there was no control? No control placed in place for that account? Apparently that was the problem because if there was control, it would not have walked the way it did. So, do you hear of people accounts being ripped off like the district account was ripped off? Probably not. No, and why not? Because there are controls in place to prevent most accounts from being ripped off the way this account was ripped off. Now, did we have control in place for the district account when this happened? Now, I would like to know that because this is important. Because every time the district gets ripped off, I get ripped off. I have to pay more taxes. Now, control, control should be in place to protect district funds and the community like myself. Because if the district is ripped off, we got to pay for that. I'm not happy about that. Okay. If controls are in place for the district, the district account would not be ripped off. But if no controls are in place, it'll happen every time. It'll happen. Now, if you like me, you had a great big old tax increase. And I live in the community. I know most of you live in the community. I know you had that tax increase too. And it was possibly caused, even though if the insurance paid or replaced that $4 million, your policy went up. The policy went up. Therefore, the district had to get the money from somebody to pay the additional cost of the policy. And that money came from people like myself. I'm not happy about that. Okay. In closing, CBC, Community Black Caucus, we are demanding that the district auditors do a better job in setting up protective control for the district account. I would like, I would love to see that happen. We also demand a district audit be performed on the district account and reported to the public during the March regular meeting. I'll call a special meeting. What happened? Sorry about that. The main focus of the auditor should be to explain to the community what happened and why the $4 million were able to be ripped off from this district account. Thank you.
Their conclusion, call it, panel.
So this is my favorite part of the meeting because we get to recognize our talented staff and our beautiful children, and I will like to start with staff perfect attendance. And I am honored to recognize a group of individuals whose dedication and commitment truly set a high standard in our district. Across our three campuses, we have 35 outstanding staff members who have maintained perfect attendance this full year. A testament to their reliability, professionalism, and unwavering dedication to our students in our schools. These individuals ensure that our students have the guidance, support, and resources they need to thrive. At Proviso East, we have 11 staff members who've shown up every single day, demonstrating the pirate spirit of perseverance and commitment. At Proviso Math and Science Academy, nine individuals have upheld the excellence and consistency that makes PMSA a model of academic distinction. And at Proviso West, 15 staff members have exemplified the Panther pride by being there for our students day in and day out. On behalf of the Proviso Township High School District 209, we extend our deepest appreciation and gratitude to these staff members. Your commitment does not go unnoticed, and we thank you for the impact you make each and every day. Let's give them a well-deserved round of applause. At this time, I'd like to call up our principals, starting with Principal Hall from East High School, to call up the teachers that are here to receive the certificate, and for board members to join me on the floor to congratulate them as well.
Good evening. Start by calling the teachers that are just in the audience. Mr. Ismael Sandoval. Ms. Rebecca Josephak. Mr. Paul Freckel.
Wash your hands after this.
Please don't get sick after this meeting.
Mr. Timothy Thomas, who's not in attendance. Ms. Lauren Breckhiser, not in attendance. Ms. Brett Buffalo, who's not in attendance. Mr. Robert Hyman, who's not in attendance. Ms. Kathy Hilligan, who's not in attendance. Mr. Ben Giselski, not in attendance. And Ms. Vanessa Collins, who's not in attendance. Congratulations to all the teachers at Proviso East who have perfect attendance for the first semester. There's also a few administrators that had perfect attendance, but I know we've forgotten that.
Yeah, we could squeeze in.
Freakish little tongue.
One, two, three. Perfect, thank you.
To be honest, I saw one, but he snuck out to avoid us. So when he comes back in, Dr. John Mordecai has perfect attendance. So we'll get him on the way in for a picture. So very quickly, and they are not here this evening to receive their recognition, but Mr. Caldwell, Mr. Berelica, Dr. Han, Mr. Oliveris, Ms. Parker, and Mr. Wolfclimber.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Thank you to all of our staff. We've been working really hard, and we've seen a real increase in attendance and just commitment, so thank you to everyone. Our staff that are here today, it's Karen Weldon. If you'd please come up. Herman Walter, please come up. I saw him a little bit ago. He snuck, but maybe he got towards me. Okay, Luke Dozel. Tremaine Franklin. And tonight, we have Carl Williams for Martha Williams. And so if he would come up and take this for her, we would appreciate it, and we wish her well. Did Herman Walter walk that thing? Okay, that's done. So the other teachers, we actually had 17. I just wanted to make sure that we recognize that. So we have Zachary Justin, we have James Lee, Tina Lyra, Diana Medina, Judith Pollack, Margaret Riley, David Vassallo, Daniel Binowitz, and Hillary Gray Jones, and Jeremy Humphries, and David Daniel, and Sherman Blade. Did I already go through it? Oh, here, Ms. Pollack. I'm so sorry. I didn't see you come in my, I'm so sorry, sweetie. Thank you. Judith, thank you. Judith Pollack, one of our awesome art teachers. So thank you, everyone, and thank you to all of our staff, your commitment to our children. Appreciate it. And there's Dr. Mordecai. You can make him come up here now. Since he hid, Mr. Perfect Attendance.
Do we need a picture?
We can all squeeze in. I'll get for West.
You're representing well, thank you.
You put it at the front.
I insist you have it front.
All right, right this way. One, two, three. One more, one more. One, two.
So moving on into our student recognition. Tonight, we also recognize an outstanding student athlete whose actions have exemplified the true spirit of sportsmanship and leadership. Sean Q, a student at Proviso Math and Science Academy and a dedicated swimmer for Proviso West, recently demonstrated an incredible moment of selflessness and has left a lasting impact on all who witnessed it. During the Proviso West Senior Day Swim Meet against Thornton High School, Sean had already completed his race when he noticed a competitor struggling to finish. Instead of simply watching from the sidelines, Sean made the remarkable decision to swim over and encourage his fellow athlete to push through to the finish. His support and sportsmanship inspired the entire crowd, reminding us all the true victory is not about winning, it's about lifting others up along the way. As Sean comes up, I would like to also mention, what makes this also so special is that Sean's own mother, Alice May Q, serves as the head swim coach. It's clear that the values of dedication, perseverance, and compassion have been instilled in him both at home and in the pool. Sean, your actions reflect the very best of Proviso Township High School's. You have shown us that leadership is not about personal success, but about how we uplift those around us. On behalf of the Board of Education and our entire district, we thank you for being an inspiration to your peers, your team, and entire community. Please join us for this very worthy award.
He's really tall. Mr. I'm here, I'm trying to get there.
Do you have this?
No, if I have it over here, one second.
Perfect, perfect. All right, right this way. One, two, three.
So for our last award, I've asked Principal Hall to be the presenter of this as I know he has a special relationship with these two remarkable students.
So in August of 2021, I had two twin sisters that came in, Jacela and Jada Hoover. It is my distinct honor to recognize these two exceptional students from Proviso East High School, senders Jacela and Jada Hoover. These students have both achieved remarkable feats, securing over $1 million each, $1.3 billion each in scholarships. A testament to their unwavering dedication and academic excellence. The Hoover sisters exemplify the power of collaboration and mutual support. They divided their research, shared their findings, and assisted each other with identifying the best scholarships and opportunities. As they look ahead, both have clear and commendable aspirations. Jada plans to study clinical psychology focused on mental health and underserved communities, while Jacela intends to pursue elementary education and will make a meaningful impact in our school systems. They have set high standards for both their peers, their little sisters who are also in attendance, and have brought immense pride to Proviso East High School and our entire district. Please join me in congratulating Jacela and Jada Hoover on their outstanding achievements and wishing them continued success in their future endeavors.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Mom, you want to come up? Round two, let's do it.
You guys coming, sir? So moving on in the agenda, coming to item number 10 is Vision 2030 Resolution. This is a resolution that had been shared with you in previous communications. At this point, I just want to recognize that I will be asking the board to sign onto this Vision 2030 Resolution, and this is something that has been developed with many of the I organizations, IPA, IESA, IESB, ISBA. And essentially, this is putting a commitment board and words board to say that we are interested in future-focused education with a commitment to equity and funding. And so I know many of you were at the Triple I conference, and this was a major topic of discussion. So I just wanted to formally put it on the agenda. It was an information item last month, but I will be asking the president and the secretary to sign onto this resolution. Moving on is the superintendent's report. Who's driving over here? So first, we'll have up Dr. Watson Hill with the treasurer's report and bill list.
Please, everyone, board members and community members. Mr. Bennett, may you please come to the front? All right, first, we will start out with this moving fast. All right, first, we will start with the treasurer's report. We are halfway through the year at this point. So pertaining to our revenue, we have received 56% of our proposed revenue for the district. So we're doing really well in that area. Revenue from our taxes will be coming in during the months of February and March, so we should see a significant increase there soon. As it pertains to our proposed budget for expenditures, right now, we have expended 60% of our budget, so we're pretty much on track in reference to that. Are there any questions pertaining to the treasurer's report? Next up, as you can see, we have a very hefty bill list. Are there any questions pertaining to the bill list? Okay. Well, before I close, I just want to send a special message out to the business office team. I just want to acknowledge all their hard work, regardless of whatever they see every day. They tackle each and every issue with They tackle each and every issue with grace and always show mercy to everyone. And their hard work does not go unnoticed. That's every member inside the business office. I just want to acknowledge you today. So thank you, guys.
So back to the superintendent's report is a presentation from PLCCA. I have asked them to come on and talk about their item, which is also located in the Consent Agenda Item F. Here with us with a few technical difficulties.
Let me just check it, Mr. Band again, because I can see it here and it's not being displayed over here.
Good evening to the board, the board president, superintendent, deputy superintendent, and the principals that represent the three schools. We're indeed happy to be here. I'm Claudia Correll, the executive vice president of PLCCA. We're here on behalf of Bishop Dr. Claude Porter and the entire PLCCA family. We work diligently every day to bring about services to the community members throughout Proviso, like and across the state of Illinois. We serve over 30,000 people annually. We're here, as we were the last two years, to discuss the Illinois Youth Investment Program, the summer jobs. Some of you may be new on the board, but I do see some old faces, well, some beautiful faces as well.
Wow.
We rephrase that. So we have, thank you. We have Ms. Cross here, who's the associate director of our Employment and Training Services Department. She's going to go through as quickly as possible. In the interest of your time, that we value the presentation that will hopefully represent and educate you on what this particular program is that will help our students throughout the school district.
Good evening. Actually, my name is Shabana Cross. I'm the associate director of Employment and Training Services at PLCCA. Some of you are very familiar with the Illinois Youth Investment Program, as this is our second year that we've participated with Proviso District 209 to provide high schoolers with job opportunities within the district amongst the three campuses. The Illinois Youth Investment Program is funded by IDHS, serving youth between 16 to 24 who reside in Illinois, offering part-time and full-time opportunities. We do have two program outputs that we use, which are short-term, typically what District 209 participates in, and then long-term, which is more permanent opportunities for individuals that are in higher age, 18 to 24. The benefit of the summer program that we have had with District 209, Mr. Hall, Ms. Martinez, Ms. Chikados, and then the interim superintendents that we had worked with last year, definitely have worked all together in making sure that the opportunities that the youth were meaningful. They worked between Proviso East, West, and PMSA, putting in the work to make sure that when we got the feedback from their supervisors, that everybody had good reviews and everybody always enjoys the different positions and the supervisors that they have within the schools. The commitment of District 209 is providing a max of 25 hours per week for the students with a competitive pay starting at $15.80, not to exceed $17 per hour. The students do get a $250 stipend or incentive from PLCCA upon completing some of the job readiness activities that they complete before we place them within the district. The youth get continued case management support services. We provide them transportation in uniform to get to and from, their work sites in uniform, gloves or work shoes that they may be working with. They also get weekly check-ins, and we work with them, like we said, weekly to get them updated on updating their resume, how to perform at a job, how to get jobs after they participate in the summer program. We're asking for the district to then sign a new agreement for the upcoming year to provide the same opportunities for 25 youth, starting at $15 an hour, up to $15.80, my apologies, up to 17 dollars per hour. The district has already provided job descriptions for these different places within the different schools and the staff to assist them. Mrs. Gale, as well as Mrs. Hogs, who do a really good job at managing that as well. And then a continuous submit of invoice to PLCCA to reimburse the wages of the youth. Now, the reimbursement does include any taxes or payroll fees that are included. The documents to be included with the invoice is timesheets to prove of the students being working there, as well as the paycheck stubs to be submitted that invoice by the fifth business day of the month. And last year, I did work with Dr. Watson Hill to complete that and had no issues there. So this program has been working for the last two years. The youth are enjoying it. We always get great reviews from the principals and the youth that we do get placed there. And we do start recruiting early on, because we do only have 25 spots, and hoping that in future, we get more spots to be able to provide more opportunities for new individuals.
Thank you, Ms. Cross. I did want to just mention the $15.80, where it can go up to $17 an hour. I don't know if all of you heard or say, that should include the payroll taxes. So that's why we've already done the math to say, okay, with this IDHS saying that we can have 17 to reimburse you, we figured out if you pay the student $15.80, then that allows for that additional money to cover those taxes. Okay, so that's what we mean by 17. You don't want to pay them 17, because then you still have to pay those taxes. We cannot eat that. We're not allowed to do so. And I do want to ask the principals very quickly in conclusion, do you feel, by show of waving your hand, that this has gone well for your students across the schools? Wonderful. Every year, I've been a part of it, and the kids have been fantastic. We thank you, and we thank you for your consideration. Enjoy the rest of your evening. Thank you.
I will say, speaking to our principals and seeing PLCCA in action, we are very thankful for the partnership, and we look forward to continuing our work with you. I do want to read a statement as we move on into the superintendent's report. And this is just around the great celebrations that happened in February. Each February, we take this opportunity not only to honor the legacy of icons such as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., Rosa Parks, Malcolm X, Harriet Tubman, and so many others, but also recognize the everyday heroes in our community, Black educators, students, parents, and leaders who shape the future every day. Black history is more than a story of struggle. It's a story of triumph, innovation, and perseverance. From the arts to science, from politics to education, Black individuals have been in the forefront of shaping America's culture and progress. As educators and school leaders, we have the profound responsibility to ensure that the lessons of Black history are not just confined to one month, but woven into our curriculum, our conversations, and our community year-round. This means ensuring that our classrooms reflect diverse voices, that our students see themselves in what they learn, and that we empower all young people with the knowledge that they are capable of greatness. I also want to take a moment to recognize the Black students, teachers, and staff within our district. Your voices, perspectives, and experiences enrich our schools in immeasurable ways. You are the changemakers, the future leaders, who will continue to push the boundaries of what is possible. This month, our schools will be engaging in a variety of activities to honor Black history. Classroom lessons, guest speakers, student-led discussions, exhibits, and more. But our community must extend beyond these events. We must continue fostering an environment of diversity, inclusivity, equity, and respect for all. Additionally, during today's board meeting, we will have the opportunity to examine student survey data regarding their experiences with our Black History course. This feedback is invaluable as we continue to enhance our curriculum, ensure meaningful representation, and provide an educational experience that resonates with all students. It is our goal not only to teach history, but to inspire engagement, critical thinking, and a deeper understanding of the past, present, and future. So tonight, as we recognize Black History Month, let's reaffirm our dedication to uplifting the voices, to acknowledging the past, and to building a more just and equitable future. Let us remind our students that their dreams are valid, their history is powerful, and their futures are limitless. Thank you, and let's continue working together to ensure that the lessons of Black history are not just remembered, but truly lived every day in each of our schools and throughout our community. I want to highlight some events that are happening around the district within our schools on February 20th at Proviso West, the annual walking museum. On February 21st at PMSA, we'll have the East Black History assemblies. On February 28th, we'll have the Proviso East Black History assemblies. And on our social media, we are constantly updating with weekly postings honoring and highlighting our alumni. And know that if we do miss an alumni, please reach out, and we will make corrections. We are trying to create this repository so we can ensure that we honor everybody that's walked through our doors and give them the respect they so truly deserve. So moving on, I do want to go into the data around our Black History 365 survey presentation. Can somebody drive the computer to the next slide? So in December 2024, we delivered surveys to all three campuses. 151 students responded with 43 from PMSA, 60 from East, and 48 from West. And we were trying to measure the perceptions of students and how they felt they were learning in our Black History courses. You go to the next slide. And so as we started, we realized that what students responded to us was that only 12% of our students felt that they had a good understanding. They felt they knew a lot about Black history. Fast forward to the next slide, you can see a 45% increase. 57% of our students said after taking this course, they felt that they had a good knowledge of African-American history, which tells us that the course is working. Right now, all the data isn't positive, but this, for me, is the most important. It's because when students are engaging in the Black History course, they realize that they, and they're recognizing, self-recognizing, that they are learning more about the culture. You go to the next slide. 77% felt that the course did change their understanding of African-American history. And the next slide, while only 16% are interested in continuing learning about Black history, I think we pique the interest in about 40% is that they maybe would be interested in learning more. And I think as an education, as an institution, that what we are striving to do is to expose students to new things and to try and pique their interests so they can go and learn more. And the work that we do as educators is to help our students learn to teach themselves and to continue their learning and become lifelong learners. On the next slide, our students believe that it's situated well with the sophomore class. 53% believing that it should be with sophomores, 28% believing that it should be with freshmen, which tells us that the students do not believe that this is an upperclassing course, but it's something that should be delivered within the first two years. On the next slide, what the students reported was that they did feel that this should be a one semester course. And the question was if we thought it should be a full year. So 70% of the students did believe that it should be a one semester course. And so that was the analysis of the survey. But I know that Tony Valente is here who oversees, and if he has any questions, he can have it answered.
I do. On this Black History 365, you're saying this is actually taking place in the district, in the different schools?
All three of the schools, the survey was taken.
So this was just a survey? Michael Stern, is this is really being taught? Let me tell you why.
Yes, sir.
Last year, I actually visited Proviso West. And I asked a question, why do you have so many books here? He said, the teachers don't check them out. I said, then how are they teaching Black history? I don't know.
A lot of teachers are.
Books are. Then they took me to another room where books were stacked up to the ceiling. And I said, is this course really being taught using the books that this Board of Education, the Board of Education invested in? I said, not really. You know, people have their way of teaching the Black history. And so that's why I'm just concerned, a little puzzled with the survey and how it came back. But if you're saying this is being taught and they're using 365, okay?
They are, a lot of them are using the ebook that we also have available. The district made a purchase to buy each student an ebook, and teachers are using that. Part of the survey that's not on there that we added later was student response. So what I did is I took a deep dive into the curriculum to see what students are learning. And myself and some of the community members, I do want to thank Ms. Cole, Dr. Cole, and Bishop Saffo, who helped us with the survey. They created the survey. We gave the survey. And then one of the things I was looking at was the curriculum taught. And based on the written responses and some of the questions, and we can provide that for you, we were confident that the curriculum, they were adhering to the curriculum throughout the course. Now, there were some classes that were taught a little bit differently. I'm sure they were. But we are confident through our C process that teachers are working together collaboratively to make sure that the curriculum is taught, and I meet with them as well. So I do want to say special thank you to Ms. Cole and Bishop Saffo, who helped us immensely with the survey. And they're going to also meet with our teachers next month, and they've agreed to do that, Ms. Cole has, so that we can discuss the community's perception of what's going on with the Black history. The district made a huge investment on it, and we want to make sure that we're following through extensively with the community.
Okay, moving on. Alex, someone held me up here. My clicker's not working. I apologize, yes. And so I just want to make a brief statement here, because I'm kind of shifting how I'm doing my superintendent's report. And what I want to do is just kind of walk through all of the information items that will be part of item 12. And then also have staff preview the consent agenda items in more detail. The reason I'm doing a brief walkthrough of the information items is because we provided information to you in the past. We'll continue to provide information to you in the weekly updates so that you are fully aware of these topics. And so if you believe that I'm being brief, know that when we get to item 12, you can call off any of the staff members that are aligned to a specific item. But I want to try to see if this might be a more effective way to work through the information items and the consent agenda. So the first one is around the Press Policy 117, which is in the agenda as a first reading. You may remember that I included it in the previous packet, and that was as information-only. This is being included as a first read. We're bringing it now to a first read after Board Member Hickson, assisted by our staff member Brenda Horton, had a policy meeting that was very well-attended and some wonderful food. And we were able to walk through some of the major changes in that policy. Moving on to Flashlight 360. This is support that we're looking to purchase for our EL students. As you know, we have a significant amount of students within our EL department. From our last board meeting, I did update you on the progress of our EL students, and unfortunately, many that will not reach proficiency under the state. But we are still trying to ensure that we are providing them the very best in education. So while they may not meet that state metric, because they've been in the program for four years and a lot, we want to make sure that at the end of the day, it's not about state report cards, it's about what children can do once they graduate from our schools. And we want all of our students to be functional, literate adults that can survive in society. And so this Flashlight 360 is. And so this Flashlight 360 is, is a system, it's an assessment system and a benchmark assessment, which can help our students in two domains, the two domains that they, they struggle with the most, which are speaking and writing. And so we are hoping that this, this new service and new support for our students will have a beneficial impact on our, on our EL students. The next item will be the registration of school fees. This will be brought to the board members in March for approval. And we're looking at bringing school fees back into the forefront. I know that due to the pandemic, we moved away from school fees. But I do want to note that in your board packet, in the board memo, you will see the fees that we're proposing, a comparative analysis between the school districts and the neighboring high school districts here to show that we are still very well below the fees that other districts are charging. And a reminder that any, any parent that qualifies can still apply for a week. Moving on, curriculum writing. We're looking to, we're looking to provide curriculum writing this summer. Per the CBA, it's forty-eight-hundred-and-twenty dollars for a full-year course and twenty-four-hundred-and-ten dollars for a half semester. We're focusing on looking at courses that are full-year, full-year courses that we don't have curriculum on file for. And we're also, we need audit to see which of our programs have not, have we not done right in force since 2015 so that we can update. We are big believers in bringing our teachers together to help write this curriculum because we know that publishers that create their curriculum don't always know the ELLA learning standards and don't know the specifics of our district and our students. And so this is one way to ensure that the instruction that is delivered to students every single day is, is aligned to a curriculum that is also aligned to our ELLA learning standards. The next item is the new AP Calculus textbook. The last time we had, the last time we had purchased an AP Calculus textbook was thirteen years ago. We brought our math coordinator together with all of our AP Calculus teachers, and they were unanimous in their selection, which was the updated version of the course book that they're currently using. So this will be the sixth edition. We're looking at about three hundred copies and six teacher editions for approximately fifty-two thousand dollars. I just want to pause here because I do think it's important when we're purchasing textbooks that we have teacher voice. And that teachers are, if they're not unanimous, but supportive of the textbooks that we're using. Quarterner Patterson, when you mentioned that sometimes you walk into school and you see textbooks aren't being used, it always makes me wonder of what was the textbook selection process? How were teachers communicated with? What was their involvement, right? Are we purchasing the tools that teachers are saying they need so that our students can be successful and their instruction can be the most effective? And so that's why I'm proud of the work that was done by our coordinators in bringing all of our teachers together. And while I don't always expect it's going to be unanimous, in this case it was. So I'm confident as we move in with this, as I move, as we move to this purchase, it's a textbook that will actually be used by our educators. Next one, I really wish that Mike Swanson was here for. But this is our E-Rate Switch Ethernet Renewal. So this is essentially the Ethernet services that are provided, essentially how we get our Internet into schools. And so this is at a ninety percent reimbursement rate. And so essentially, we're looking at through this paying about three-hundred-and-ninety dollars a month for the switched Internet, Ethernet that that's coming. We typically do this renewal on yearly, on a yearly basis. The next one is a program called Gaggle. When I came into the district, I realized that we were not, we did not have a system in place that was monitoring where our students were doing on their computers. And so in previous districts where I've worked, where I've worked with Gaggle, and it's, it's intrusive, but, let me take that back. It's a way to protect our children, sometimes from themselves or sometimes from some of the situations that they find themselves in. What Gaggle does, it's an overlay on all of our student machines, and it monitors the work that they're doing. So it has keystrokes to say when, you know, things like bullying, or fighting, or mental health issues, suicide. They'll be able to, to collect that information and report it back to us. So it has a content analysis, it has an expert review, and it has this rapid response. So the nice thing about Gaggle and sensitive platforms, some of the other products that we've looked at, is that we had, it had actual live operators reviewing the information to determine how to elevate this to the school district. And that rapid response, they will call you at any time, twenty-four seven. As a superintendent in my previous district, we had gotten calls at two in the morning, at three in the morning. Because students will be writing essays, students will be messaging each other. And it picks up almost immediately. And we were able to, I mean, to get support to students' houses before they did some terrible things, fights, suicide, you know, some of the other issues that our children deal with. So we are, I'm a big supporter of this program. It also will look at our, we have a program called Microsoft Teams where students can message each other, almost like instant messaging. This will also review this to make sure students are appropriately corresponding, not only with their peers, but with the staff of the district as well. Those are the information items, again, that we will be updating throughout the two and now in the next board meeting with more information about these items so that once we come through the consent agenda, you are, so that I'm confident, and you're confident, that you have all the information you need to make a, make a decision. Next, we'll move into the consent agenda. The first item is one that Deputy Superintendent Ashop will take around the 2025, 2026 calendar.
Hi, Board, and my name, my name is Alex Ashop, Deputy Superintendent of Educational Services. The first consent agenda item that you have is our 2025, 2026 school calendar, previously presented as an information in last month. We'll note that there is one update from last month to this month around the parent-teacher conferences. We did want to try to do it all day with working with the union. Again, thank you for the support with the PTU, did make a slight adjustment to that. So we're looking at one to three PM for parent-teacher conferences, and then a five to eight, the virtual option. So it'll be either virtual, whether the teachers want to be and come to school and do that remotely, or go to their home and do that remotely. We're working very closely with our technology integrationists to find means to make sure that those meetings can kind of be held at specific times so that, you know, teachers and parents don't go over that time for that. And that, as previously said, we will have a freshman orientation date, which is not going to be part of the official ISB calendar, but firmly believe in the support that our freshmen would need on that first initial day to just get familiar with where they're going, finding their locker, practicing their locker, and just kind of meeting their teachers and adjusting to that change of high school. And then, as I said, we are working closely with our foundation schools to ensure that alignment. And this has been shared with each of those eight superintendents to ensure that they have this calendar and aligning their calendar to ours as well. Questions around the calendar?
I just have a question in reference to the parent-teacher conference.
Yes, ma'am.
And just have a understanding, from one to three, it would be in person?
Yes, ma'am.
And from five to eight, it would be virtual?
Yes, ma'am.
So in the past, our parent-teacher conferences were two hours, correct, and they were in person. What we're trying to do is get more time for parents to interact with, with teachers. So we're still, we're still keeping the one to three in person, and then allowing for the five to eight virtual.
Something similar in years past, where we'll still have a half, half school day for, for students, and then in that afternoon session, we'll leave those parent conferences on that, on that, the two days for end of quarter one and end of quarter three. All right, next consent item, consent agenda item is Academic Tutoring ACT Bootcamp. Program that we've used before is academic tutoring. We're very closely with our principals, thank you principals, and designing a specific program for their grade eleven students and possibly select grade ten students, but primarily looking at grade eleven students, a hundred students per school to provide specific academic tutoring. Each of those principals has designed that around the best fit for their school and their students, and confident that this is going to increase those scores. I know this is something that the board has asked for. Last year, I think, in the position where we just, we're not in the position to get that last year, working well in advance to get that for our students, and they've designed each of those sessions for, for each of the schools.
It's a hundred students per school?
Yes, ma'am, one hundred students per school. And the principals are working very closely identifying the students they already have been identified and, and kind of working to expand that if needed, if there's any student absences.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I know in the past, when we bought for Bootcamps for the S H T, the focus was on finding the kids who were like almost there and who just needed the extra tutoring for the boost.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, is that kind of what we're doing here for finding students?
Yes, so this is starting with Proviso East. Because of their, some of the designation status, they do have access to a program called AppCra, which is our accountability partner. So working with them and their staff to identify those, you know, those what we call bubble kids, those kids that would be the largest impact and focusing some specific supports with them. And I know with PMSA and with Proviso West, looking at that too. With PMSA, it's slightly different because it's almost their entire junior class. And then with Proviso West, yeah, looking very closely at our students' scores from Horizon to identify and then to see what students are selecting this opportunity. Anything from the principals that they'd like to add?
Our students, I started after school on Saturday, went with a parent feedback, which was allowing them to sign up rather than by score.
Did you guys? Yeah, we had, okay.
Well, I mean, you know, hers is, she, they told us we'd been off some hours during the day, the kids would be pulled, and there are bubble kids, therefore, I'm gonna, I'm breathing my, double benefit.
Same thing with the S H T. Something like, like says during the school day, you can, you know, wanna pull the pressure.
So I think this is, is this JCI here?
Yep. I'll, I'll take.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we have a action item from JCI for your consideration for professional service with Proviso East, West, and Madison Science Academy for the fire extinguishers, suppression system, the sprinklers, devices throughout the building. A work that JCI has been doing for the district for about nineteen years. The totality for Madison Science for all, all services is thirty-one thousand nine sixty-six ninety. Proviso West is thirty-eight thousand eight ninety-four twenty. Proviso East is fifty-eight thousand five nine thirteen forty for a total of one hundred twenty-nine thousand seven seven four for the district. And considering the exceptional services that we have received from JCI this past year, we're proposing a three-year service agreement at one hundred twenty-nine thousand seven seven four seventy annually. There will be no increases over the three-year duration of the contractual agreement. Is there any questions?
I have a question. When it says sound, what does that mean? Like the alarms they have, like alarms that are going on?
That would be the intercom system that they utilize every morning to communicate in each classroom.
Okay.
That's the sound. But the horns and scrubs is part of it too, like the device behind you there that creates noise. That's part of the annual inspection. And also, if devices are found defective within the warranty period, they swap them off for free.
All right, moving along. In our consent agenda, next item for your consideration is our staffing for our summer school program for this summer. I'm going to invite Mr. Tony Valente, our coordinator for Social Studies and Physical Education, who is leading this effort and has last year as well. Mr. Valente?
Good evening, Vice President Hickson and the rest of the distinguished Board of Education, Superintendent Mohib, and community. Before I review the summer programs, I would like to recognize individuals that make summer school possible. Special thanks to Ms. Moreno, who helps me constantly, Dr. Wadzani, from the union perspective, and Mr. Brysh, who's always helping with personnel. No one does this by, by themselves. Last year, we had over two thousand students registered for summer school program, and students recovered nearly eighteen hundred half credits, over a hundred and eighty original half credits. And we provided enrichment opportunities for incoming freshmen. We also graduated sixty-plus students over the summer. School Graduation started morning, which is the largest number we have ever graduated. This year, we'll be running a myriad of opportunities for our current students and incoming students for the summer at Proviso East and Proviso West High School. This year, summer school will run in a two-session format, Monday through Thursday. School will start at eight AM and be dismissed at one PM. Session one will begin June ninth to June thirtieth, no school on June nineteenth for the holiday. Session two will be July seventh through July twenty-fourth, no school on July one, two, three, or four. Breakfast will be served daily at seven twenty to seven fifty for all students. Hot lunch will be served for all students, this year is a limited change, at twelve thirty. Bussing will not be provided for the exception of the E S Y students and students who travel from West to East for specific programming, like band, freshman connection, driver's education, Black History 365, or civics. This will depend on enrollment numbers at both schools. We are offering original credit opportunities for current and incoming students. Students will have the opportunities to enroll in original credit classes such as Black History 365, civics, physical education, algebraic reasoning, driver's education classroom, and reading one. This will provide additional opportunities for students to accelerate their course of study or get ahead for their dual-credit program degree through Triton College. Like last year, we'll be offering and providing V T W behind-the-wheel opportunities for students so they can avoid the backlog of waiting for such opportunities. Last year, we serviced a hundred and seventy students in this capacity, and this year, we will service all students who wish to finish the driver's education experience. Thank you to Mr. Wang for all the hard work as the V T W facilitator last year. Our main focus for summer school will be our credit recovery program through Ingenuity. We have been working with Ingenuity this year, and we have solidified an academic integrity platform for our teachers to closely monitor student work through Ingenuity. Furthermore, we are continuing our comprehensive no-cellphone policy for our students that will also assist in the academic integrity piece of Ingenuity. We are also providing support system for our students so that they can be successful. Special education and EL services will be provided through the push-in service model. Counselors and social workers will be on hand to support our socio-emotional and counseling need for our children. And security will be allocated to help for the safety and supervision of our students. We will also be continuing our successful night school program through the summer so students, in summer, in night school, can keep up pace with their credits and receive services throughout the year. I want to thank the Board of Education for their continued support of our summer school program. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them for you at this time. Thank you for your continued support, Board of Education.
Thank you, Mr. Valente, and all those that support our summer school program. Continuing on with our consent agenda, next up is our SchoolLink's post-secondary platform. So again, this was an information item last month. Right now, we are currently using a program called NAMYAS to support our post- Right now, we are currently using a program called Naviance to support our post-secondary platform. We're looking at introducing SchoolLinks. We had a representative come at the last meeting to present to the Board of Education and the community, which extensively did a similar presentation with our principals, with our counselors. We are now looking at adopting this and replacing Naviance for next school year with also a transition for this school year, if approved by the board, at no additional cost to us. And part of this package will also include professional development for our counselors to ensure a smooth transition again from Naviance over to SchoolLinks. Next item is our Youth Investment Program for our P L C C A. You heard just previously, we talked about another program, that I Y I P program. This year, you'll see a linkage agreement for your consideration focusing on our truant students. Again, truant student are students that are missing five percent or more school days. Those are considered chronic truant versus a chronically absent student who is missing more than ten percent. The idea of trying to catch the students and give them support and services before they become a chronically absent student. So looking at parent calls, home visits, restorative practices, referrals to behavioral health services, a lot of those wraparound services from P L C C A, and they've been a wonderful partner to us. This is again, at no cost to the district, is something very valuable and that we, that we do need for our students. With that support, you're looking at five total members from P L C C A, with two at Proviso East and West, and one at the Math and Science Academy. Any questions on those consent agenda items?
We have a few more, we have one more. So this one, I'll, I'll take Alex. This is a, this is one that we're presenting you for special conditions with this, which is a, which allows us to adapt policies without a first week. And so these two policies are in response to some challenges that are occurring for some of our students in regards to immigration. So we are looking to amend policy seven one fifty. This is for agents who can place interviews or contact with students. And this aligns with the updated administrative procedures that we've created and details when and how a student can be interviewed or contacted by a federal agent. A new policy is Board Policy eight thirty-five, which is immigration enforcement activities by federal agents. And this again aligns with the established administrative processes on how to respond to activities occurring within the school. I will say, you know, this is a challenge for many of our students. And this is not a political statement, but rather, we want to ensure that our attendance rates stay high. And we want to make sure that all of our students feel safe when coming to school. And so I do want to applaud our administrators, who on January nineteenth, keep together on a Sunday to talk through this, to get trained, to go through a one-pager with, with help from our legal team, to ensure that by that Tuesday, which was our first day back, when we realized things were changing, that we had the supports in place. And so I applaud this community, I applaud this school district. We have sent multiple messages to families informing them of our policies that we will not allow agents into the schools to, to access a student unless they're serving a criminal warrant signed by a judge. And we have also sent to our families whoever needs the, the motorola cards. And so this is just one more step to cement our, our policies to, to protect our own children. And I will also say it reflects the spirit of this board, who in twenty seventeen also signed a resolution very similar to the spirit of what we are doing now. Any questions? Okay, our last is a resolution to adopt an e-learning program.
All right, good evening, Board and Proviso community. So while this is also a consent agenda item, this is also the time to open a public hearing concerning the district's proposed resolution adopting an e-learning program. So the, basically, the Illinois School Code permits a school board by resolution to adopt a research-based program for e-learning days district-wide that permit student instruction to be received electronically while students are not physically present in lieu of the district's scheduled emergency days as required by section ten nineteen of the Illinois School Code. So our previous plan was adopted in two thousand twenty, you know, in conjunction with COVID, and it's due for renewal. The e-learning program and emergency inclement weather plan essentially is what most people think of it as, as allows, you know, students learning to happen remotely. The, we are seeking a three-year adoption of this plan, which was in alignment with our previous plan. It was constructed in collaboration with our teachers' union and other stakeholders. There's no substantive changes to the plan from our previous plan. We've had pretty good success in relation to the days that we utilized, both during COVID and also on emergency school closing days in the past. Basically, it outlines procedures and expectations to ensure that there's outstanding instruction that happens even though students aren't physically in the building, but learning remotely. So this plan includes instructional planning and expectations for not just teachers, but all staff. So it really covers everybody from our school counselors to our social workers, our psychologists, our librarians, every gamut of the organization to ensure that they have a role that we are able to continue instruction for our students on these days. There is a communication protocol built into the plan to ensure that we're notifying families and we're talking internally to support our students. It also highlights access to technology and non-electronic instructional materials that are used. And it certainly has appropriate learning opportunities to meet the needs of all of our students. So that includes our students, our special education students, our students who are English learners within the district. And outlines attendance and student participation, which is a, a big highlight of this plan to ensure that students are actively participating and engaging in instruction on these days. It also includes professional development for our staff in conjunction with this to ensure that we're prepared as the year goes on, should we have to utilize this plan. And expectations for staff attendance on e-learning days. And then it also provides resources for our teachers to ensure that the programs that we're using, the things that we're doing within the classroom are outlined and staff are well-prepared for that plan. So at this time, open up to the board or the public for any public comment related to the resolution adopting an e-learning program for District two oh nine. And again, it's a three-year adoption cycle for this program. So if, if there's any public comment, at this time, you could step up to the podium.
I would just say, as a board member, I, I get it and I support it, but my Gen X heart is really sad to say goodbye to snow days. And kids don't understand, like, when I was little, you had to watch the TV, right? To like, see if the name of your school district went across. Or hope that a neighbor called with the news because there were no cell phones or texting or any of that. And I just, man. I'm gonna just go into a cave now and die, I guess. To do, this is sacred. But I get it, I get it. I'm glad we're being proactive about it, thank you.
Unless there's no other comments or questions, sure?
This closes the public hearing for the resolution adopting an e-learning program for District two oh nine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice President Henson, that concludes my super-dense report.
Um, thank you. So on a personal note, I really want to thank you for your due diligence paying homage to Black History and Black History. Thank you very much. I believe I got the word homage right. All right, so of course, I am not the president, but Ms. Barbara Hand and I attended a conference, the Triple I Conference, and along with Mr. Ashoff. And to me, this is one of the, the better conferences that I actually have attended. So I'm gonna let Ms. Barbara Hand go first with her presentation because my presentation is a little doggone dropping. I'm warning you that it will be startling for nine seconds.
Can somebody help with a big thing? I've sent my little slideshow to Mr. Ben. My thing is at the top. It's a. The little one? Yeah, the little one. I promise this won't be very, very, very long, but. So Triple I was, this was my second year in attendance, and I found it very valuable. There's a lot to learn, there's a lot of collaboration between people. And two, I went to a lot of different sessions, and the general sessions were amazing, but there's two that really stood out to me. And the first one is, thank you. I did a session on school finance for board members. So understanding the challenges and responsibilities of board members and community stakeholders, understanding school finance is crucial because the way we fund our schools directly impacts our student success. So I thought this was a good one, since I was on the board for a year, kind of got my feet wet at the first Triple I, that this was a good opportunity to kind of dive into some that I wanted to improve my knowledge on. This isn't really fancy about the slideshow, but the next slide.
Sorry, there's a, I.
There's a delay, no, you're fine. So the big two ways to fund schools, right, is through property taxes and evidence-based funding. So this is kind of just for me to share, kind of what I learned, the basics, so for the community. Our primary source of funding comes through property taxes, which make up the bulk of our school revenue. Illinois has the second highest property taxes in the country. And unfortunately, this is a regressive system, and it leads to major disparities. Local control means that schools in wealthier areas have more resources, while lower-income districts struggle to keep up. Every year, we have to approve the annual tax levy to maintain our funding. So that's something, you know, we see every year, we discuss. The second major funding source is our evidence-based funding, and that comes through the state of Illinois. And this model determines how much it costs to educate all students in a district and sets an adequacy target. The adequacy target considers core and per-student investments, additional funding for low-income, special education, our E L L students, and prioritization of underfunded districts. So, in case the community didn't know that. Our current adequacy, 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 oh my gosh, that's hard to say, is eighty point four percent. And we have a per-student spending of twenty thousand six hundred and fifty-four dollars. We are ranked a Tier Two district, that means we receive additional funding, but we are still below the full adequacy level. We also discussed in this session educational versus fiscal equity, which I thought was interesting and something I hadn't really heard of a lot discussed. So educational equity means that we're ensuring every student has the opportunities, resources, and support they need to succeed. And achieving this requires us to be intentional, accountable, and understand the unique needs of our students in Proviso. Fiscal equity, on the other hand, is about how we allocate those funds. This means prioritizing student needs before budgeting, aligning our spending with district goals, ensuring sustainability and financial planning, and measuring impact through both expenditures and academic outcomes. The reality we face, this session also was kind of scary because they were very blunt, that said Illinois cannot meet its full financial obligations next year. And most districts are expected to face deficit funding. So this was like a big, like jaw dropper too. And this means that we have to be strategic, responsible, and proactive in advocating for more equitable funding while we're making smart financial decisions for our schools. As board members, community leaders, and stakeholders, we have a responsibility to understand these financial challenges and work towards solutions that ensure fair and sustainable funding for students. So, that one was a little bit, little bit scary. But it's something that's important when, that we all think about and when we talk, you know, Dr. Watson Hill discusses the financial stuff that we're paying attention to and understanding what that impact is. The other session that I attended that I thought was really great was, it was called The Trust Edge. And I attended with Mr. Ashoff, and we both furiously taking notes. And there's also one of the general session speakers, and they had a book. And I was like, oh my God, Alex, we have to get every board member a book because it was really kind of an impactful way to look at how teams and successful teams manage and work together. So it's all about trust, and trust isn't a soft skill, it's a critical asset. Trust impacts every relationship, every team, and every organization. In fact, a lack of trust is one of the biggest, biggest expenses any group can face. So right, like as trust goes up, all these great things happen, as trust decreases, all these awful negative things happen. And I thought was really interesting is, there are eight pillars of trust that this person put together. And as we were sitting there, kind of doing table discussions, I was like, well, those two really matter to me. But the two that might matter to somebody else, they're like, to you, Mr. Brysh, might be different, right? So it was interesting to kind of figure out that everybody has these different pillars. We all have all of them, right? And we, we kind of think about them, but some are more important to others. And learning that about people and how to communicate with people and how to build trust, I thought was interesting. Mine, for example, is competency. That's like one of my big important pillars, right? But somebody else's might be compassion or commitment, so. How trust impacts organizations. We talked about, kind of when teams work together more effectively, it's because they trust each other, right? And if we have skepticism and suspicion, it's a waste of time, right? We're having to double-check people's work, it slows things down. We're having to ask multiple people, like, what do you think, what do you think? So building a culture of trust is really important for high-functioning teams to be productive. The other kind of interesting thing I thought was, when you talk about trust and when you lose trust with somebody, how do you regain it, right? And like, it doesn't start with saying, I'm sorry, or I messed up. Like, while you're holding yourself accountable and acknowledging that you made a mistake, that's really not how you build trust. And the only way to do that is by making a new commitment and sticking with it and honoring that new commitment to somebody. Making a new commitment and keep it. And then, just my final thought for this was that I would love to bring this kind of session into a board retreat. And even at like a district admin level or school board level, right, or school building level, just to do some of this trust work and kind of weave it into our culture to help us all kind of work better, collaborate. That's it. Thank you for clicking.
Of course. You go to the one all the way on the left.
Can't help but.
Um, I'm gonna play this for nine seconds. There's a connection.
Hold on, before we pay for yet another app to manage your team, let me introduce you to Connect Team, the one platform that replaces all of these I'm talking about.
You heard that? Active shooter, quick to go to the next slide. This is what we do not want to see in our schools, any of us. Parents do not send their children to school to get a telephone call that says there's been a school shooting at a high school or an elementary school. It is no longer a matter of if, but when. Go to the next slide. It is no longer a matter of if, but when. Go to the next slide, please. Here, you will see mass shootings, gun violence, many victim crisis, assault weapons, gun epidemic, gun control laws. Next slide, please. School safety, it should come up, and violent event, event, incident management. Mr. Ashoff and I attended this, and I'll tell you, I really got emotional. It's really triggered me. The violent event, incident management session provided a model framework to be used by schools, law enforcement, fire, and emergency management in order to manage response to include time to break, neutralization, medical intervention, survivability of victims, and reunification of students with students. Next slide, please. In order to have an effective team, all of those components up there have to be in place. So it's not just the superintendent calling Mr. Peppers and saying, oh, wait, I've got an active shooter in the building. No, all of those need to be in place. We need a reunification center that we need to be proactive and start looking for just in case we have an active shooter. And parents and the press need to be able to get in and out of that facility ASAP. We can no longer sit back and go, oh, okay, this may or may not happen. What if it does? How prepared are we? For me sitting here, we're not prepared as we should be. So, and I want to thank, I saw Mr. Martinez, I see Mr. Hall sitting there going, oh my God. Yes. So the command person would be the superintendent. He initiates all of those levels of response teams. Every last one, he has to decide who, which personnel is going, or any of it, is going to be in the reunification center. Do you want somebody that is not empathetic when a parent comes up and says, oh my God, oh my God, is my child shot? That person cannot say, uh, yeah, no, or is my child dead? They cannot give out that information. The only thing they can be able to do is talk to, I think it's Mr. Ashoff was the reunification manager. Yeah, reunification manager, then be able to send them to triage. And triage will then be able to send them, give them an updated information, ask to whether their child is in the hospital, and thank God, hopefully, that that never happens to us. But they can't say, your child will be fine, because we don't know if their child is fine. We know nothing until we get an update. So every last one of those articles or procedures up there has to be followed. That was my number one. And I think that session was like two and a half hours. And we did, and one thing that I did like is that they had dogs there, support, they would support dogs there in case parents have to bring their, their children there. So younger children there. So they have like a little sense of support with the dogs there. The other one, next one, is it takes the village. Collaborating for student success. Basically, it's about parental engagement to community partnership and ways to build trust and transparency to say, oh, this, in other words, just tell the truth. It isn't very difficult. If you don't know, just say, I definitely know. But I can get you some help, or I can find some resources, or I can even go to the superintendent and say, hey, this parent is concerned about this. Could you help me help this parent? And then still engage with the community. We sit on this school board. Kind of a pet peeve of mine, we sit on this school board and we make decisions, but are we out in the community like we should be? See, I can step outside of Westchester. I can step into Midwood. I can step into Forest Park. My children went to school in Forest Park. So I have lifetime friends in Forest Park. I can go to Bellewood. I grew up in, I raised my family in Bellewood. I have friends in Northland. I have friends in Merrill's Park. Get out there and be actively involved in other communities. Stop staying in your little cocoon. That is not why you were elected. Merrill's Park didn't elect you. Westchester didn't elect you. Provider Township elected you. Next slide, please. Don't post that. That's just common sense. And we all get upset. We all get, we all say things that we should not. But Facebook is not the place for you, especially if you're an elected official. Do not put silly things on Facebook, please. Whether in a public meeting or social media, board members must understand the intersection of free speech, social media, and public comments. In other words, beware of what you post on social media. Trust me, it will come back to haunt you. Trust it will, it will haunt you. The next slide, please. Business unusual presented by our law firm, which was amazing. And the highlight of it was due to COVID and troubling teacher shortage. Schools are now trying to attract teachers, drivers, and other personnel. This session focused on strategies on how to avoid workplace migration. And lastly, board conflict. Well, well, well. When conflicts arise, frictions among board members can negatively impact the ability of the board to govern. This is very true.
It's true.
How we treat ourselves trickles down into the school system. So we have to be leaders. We have to step, we should be gold standarders. Every board should be gold standard. And we discuss strategies to assist in conflict resolution. One may be, you know what, I don't particularly care for what you said at school board meeting, but that's said in private. Shouldn't be said in public. And then when we get in public, it should be unified. While I may not care for that person, I might not even like what that person said. But in public, in public, we are supposed to be unified. And that was it. Thank you. Fourteen approval of the January fourteen, twenty twenty five minutes. May I have a motion to adopt for minutes of the Board of Education meeting held on January fourteen, twenty twenty five?
This law is called the fourth one.
Mr. Alexander, absent. Mrs. Hickson.
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo.
Aye.
Ms. Patterson.
Aye.
Ms. Grant.
Aye.
Mr. Bautera, absent. Ms. Barbourhan, aye. Motion carried.
Approval of bill list. May I have a motion to approve the bill list submitted to the Board of Education dated February eleven, twenty twenty five, at the amount of six million nine hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred, I'm sorry, sixty-eight dollars and one cent?
Mr. Alexander, absent. Mrs. Hickson.
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo.
Aye.
Ms. Patterson.
Aye.
Ms. Grant.
Aye.
Mr. Bautera, absent. Ms. Barbourhan, aye. Motion carried.
Personnel report and employee count. May I have a motion to approve the February eleven, twenty twenty five personnel report including the hiring, resignation, separation, stipend positions, and leave of access? This document has worked.
So moved. Second. Mr. Alexander, absent.
Discussion.
Four, five, D six.
Can you use your microphone so I can hear as well? I'm sorry. Can you use your microphone so I can hear as well?
Five, D David, number six.
Thank you. Just that one?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, so item sixteen, personnel report, minus five, D six. Mr. Alexander, absent. Mrs. Hickson.
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo.
Aye.
Ms. Patterson.
Aye.
Ms. Grant.
Aye.
Mr. Bautera, absent. Ms. Barbourhan, aye. Motion carried. And then call it for five, D six.
Okay. May I have a motion to, right? So you want to, okay. May I have a motion to approve the February eleven personnel report including hiring, resignation, separation, and stipend positions and leave of access minus five, D, number six?
I think, I think that's where we're at. I think you just need to call the five, D six.
Five, D six.
Just make a motion for five, D six.
May I have a motion to approve, approve, five, D six?
Of the personnel report.
Of the personnel report.
Second. Any other discussion?
Discussion. I will recuse myself from five, D six. Carlos Patterson is my son.
Mr. Alexander, absent. Mrs. Hickson.
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo.
Aye.
Ms. Patterson, abstinent. Ms. Grant.
Recuse.
Not a saying. Recuse.
Ms. Grant, abstinent. Mr. Bautera, absent. Ms. Barbourhan, aye. So I will call that, Jane. We've got, okay, okay. Motion carried.
It was three oh two, right?
Three or two, yeah.
May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda to include the following agreements and measures. A, school year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six calendar. B, academic tutoring, ACT boot camp services from academic tutoring. C, Johnson Incorporated incorporated essential life and safety inspection for Provider East West and PMSA, March verse twenty twenty five through February twenty nine, fifth, twenty twenty eight. D, staff and plans for summer school twenty twenty five totaling eight hundred fifty-five thousand one hundred and twenty dollars. E, purchase of school link host secondary platform for school year twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven, and twenty twenty eight. S, agreement with Provider Life Council for Community Action Youth Investment Program. G, possible action to approve ETU grievance settlement agreement for grievance number five, seven, one, dash, two, zero, nine, dash, two, zero, eight, eight, oh, eight, two, zero, two, four, dash, DM. H, resolution adopting an e-learning program renewal. I, single reading special conditions of adad, adoption of policy seven point one five zero, agency employees interviews for contact with students amendment, eight point three five immigration enforcement activities by federal safety agreement.
So moved. Second.
Question? Question? Discussion.
All right. Mr. Alexander, absent. Mrs. Hickson.
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo.
Aye.
Ms. Patterson.
Aye.
Ms. Grant.
Aye.
Mr. Bautera, absent. Ms. Barbourhan, aye. Motion carried for the consent agenda.
Do you have any FOIA requests?
You do. Provider Township High School, District two oh nine, received the following FOIA request. On January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, the quester was Owen Wang from West Cook News requested copy of all emails and memos from the past twelve months that contain the following keywords, Lucy Hawkins and units of study. The status is in process. That concludes FOIA.
We all agree with this? You all agree with this? Happy Valentine's Day, Black History Month. We did the Triple I Conference. We have a motion to adopt.
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We are adjourned at nine oh fourteen.